Welcome everyone to the meeting of the Philometh City Council. Today is January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. Time is seven oh one P M. On tonight's agenda, we have our usual sorting business. Then we'll come back to the utility rate study, awarding of a contract. We have new business, including appointing our fiscal year two thousand and twenty five, twenty six budget officer. We have a few more appointments to the planning commission and the budget committee. And then we'll have a discussion and a hopeful approval of the standing committee and representative appointments. Then talk about some council rules updates as well as what we plan to advocate to our legislators. So with that, if the city reporter could start us off with a roll call.
Teresa Nielsen?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Spencer Irwin?
Here.
Richard Salsa?
Here present.
Christopher Mittmore?
Here. Okay, is there anyone here for public comment? Is anyone signed up online? Okay, then we'll move on to old business, starting with the utility rate study contract. And I believe the version in your packet is outdated, but you can refer to the one that's on the desk here. And I'll turn that over to our county director to walk us through it.
Hey. Okay. Start over at the very beginning. In November, we brought the council a statement of work. You can review it before we send it out. The RFP went out, hit the streets on December fourth with the return date of December thirty third. We were pleasantly surprised on December thirty first, we got received five responses. The evaluation committee, which consisted of myself, my finance staff, three members. Public Works Director, Assistant City Manager reviewed the five proposals and scored them. Matrix are the, that's part of the RFP. We sat down on January the third, I think it was. And reviewed the proposals. Prior to that day, they had given me the scores, each individual scores. And I pulled them up. We had FCS group, they had the highest score. When we sat down to evaluate it on January ten, that's when I opened up the cost proposal. We found that their proposal of hundred and twenty five thousand dollars are, I think, seventy five thousand dollars. So I went up by the committee, committee asked me to negotiate with them. They came back with their revised scope of work. They took out quite a bit, maybe seventy five. Talking with Chris and Chelsea, they reminded me if I've got to do it to one, I have to do it to all. So we're talking with Chris, in the best interest of the city, we opened up the cost proposal for the next two. And Raftless had the, they were the cheapest, they were at seventy seven thousand dollars. So what you have in front of you is a notice of intent to award that. I laid out all the scores for each one of them, and I've sent that out on January twenty third. So this is, I'm opening up my intentions on any of the process. We're happy with the results. Get five at that time of year, that's very good. Christmas, that's really good. Now we're into the seven day protest period. I don't anticipate one, so. Open it up the floor to the council for questions.
Council Andrade?
What were the differences between, like you said, they cut out a lot of the scope in their revised scope of work?
Yeah, they had, they cut out the. I don't know what to call it, because they compared the statement of, I went blank. Hosa, that's a big part of it, and let me get to that.
Just curious about like the price difference, because you said that the one Raftless was the cheapest, but like compared to the revised version also are we? I'm assuming we're getting a better deal with Raftless.
Raftless is doing the whole process for seventy seven thousand dollars. A lot of their stuff, they're going to be doing it virtual. They're from North Carolina. They've done a lot of big projects and so theirs, their cost was very, you know. They did the whole job. They didn't cut anything out. And I think we, I, it's cost of service, that's what it is, cost of service analysis. Where we, they compare all the different industries and residential and so on. That's, they wanted to cut that out. Yeah, we could do it, but like Chris said, to me and Chelsea reminded me also, if you do it to one, you have to do it to all. So that would have bought everybody's prices, prices downed. And then the best interest of the city, we decided we'll just go with Raftless.
Oh, for sure. I just wasn't, I was trying to clarify what we, what was missing? And whether or not they were still under or over budgeted or, yeah, anyway, you answered my question. So thank you.
FCS group did cut out the cost of service analysis. That was pretty big. Plus they cut out a lot of meetings. They were going to do it virtual. So they probably should have done all that at the beginning.
Raftless has experience in cities like the size of ours and.
We have, we've got quite a few big cities they give up. We can build one that's the local one. Kind of spread out throughout the United States. I can't think of any of the big names.
Good one, Washington too.
Yeah, I didn't Washington, yeah. They're all very experienced. They have very, the main leader, she's her big forte is Stormwater, but the financial people, they do, they could do it all. They gave me a charter of organization, really good. Then they also, really good, they have a P R manager, so they'll be helping with the. Talk, the town hall meeting, getting the people hopefully, you know. I don't know what they're going to do, but I'm kind of jazzed to see what you're going to do.
Right.
You know, I've never seen a P R in this kind of, it'd be interesting.
Thank you, thank you.
And forgive me if I missed it, then what, when is it supposed to all be completed?
Yeah, it'd be nice to have it done yesterday, but we've got it scheduled for. That begins on the top. We would like to get it done prior to June.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I'm going to be bringing to council a utility rate, you know, report, sorry about that. Report in a couple of days, or a couple of weeks, but started. So what we could do is when we, they can finish it before June, we can maybe do another special adoption for rates. But, you know, or whatever we decide.
More than likely, we'll set rates this year similar to previous years and won't rely overly too much on this. Likely we'll see, you know, smaller changes this year, and then we'll look to get the report and spend a good part of next year looking. It's good. It gives a little bit more time to roll it out before it comes in fact. Does a little bit more P R outreach as well. So as much as we were hoping to get the utility rate study done and into this year's.
Yeah, in Newport, we put it in stages when we did it. So we tried to do the same thing and. We just kind of took it slow to implement it.
Okay, we'll have a better treatment plan by then, because that hasn't gone out for yet either. And so there are still some kind of big unknowns that even for this report, we're going to be kind of waiting until we. Movement plan came in at, so we can put that into actual numbers rather than, you know, right now there's projected budgetary numbers, so. Delay, those delay equals delay. We're delayed.
So I'm willing to make a motion. I move to direct the city manager to execute the contract for utility rate study services with Raftless following the seven day protest period.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Council Nielsen, seconded by Council Cracker. To direct the city manager to execute the contract for the utility rate study service with Raftless following the seven day protest period. Is there any discussion on the motion? A none? Would all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Which is the appointment of a budget officer. If only there were someone here who were just telling us about the budget. However, the contact for this is City Manager Chris Workman, so I'll turn it over to him.
Yeah, so, that looks pretty straightforward on this one. Long, you, the finance director, if there was capacity, some city managers stood with their money from the finance. They've done a great job. For him, studied the last few years he's been here, so the recommendation, Muzinski, our finance director, is this.
Any questions? Yeah, Council Andrade?
I move the city finance director, Mike Mrazinsky, to serve as the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget officer.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Seconded by Council Nielsen to appoint Finance Director Mike Mrazinsky to serve as the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six budget officer. Public City Manager, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Congrats, Mike. That is a hotly contested one. Okay, speaking of hotly contested appointments. Our next agenda item is planning commission appointments. And as a refresher from our previous meeting, we still had two vacancies that we needed to fill. And we have received one additional application from Kyle Cup, who I'm sure you all will remember from the previous, well. Most of us will remember from the previous meeting. And you can see any responses to questions and everything in the packet. So. We need council discussion on this potential appointment to the planning commission.
I move that the city council appoint Kyle Cup to serve a four year term on the Philometh Planning Commission with the term expiring on December thirty first, twenty twenty eight.
Second, okay. It's been moved by Council Salsa, seconded by Council Andrade to appoint Kyle Cup to serve a four year term on the Philometh Planning Commission. Term expiring on December thirty first, twenty twenty eight. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, I think that was unanimous.
Before we move off of planning commission, yeah, thanks. Before we move off planning commission. Within the municipal code, we're going to be, it's the terms and requirements for the end of those terms. We do have a commissioner that just came off that may have some interest in coming back on, if not for the term limit expiring. At the council's discretion, if you want to waive that requirement or remove that requirement to not be able to run again. With terms, so essentially allowing for a third term. That is your prerogative, you could do that. You know, we've only been advertising this for a couple of months now. We didn't get any applications. Now we've got one, which was Kyle who applied for council and wasn't appointed, so I'm great, I really appreciate Kyle coming on for that. I'm a little concerned about not having somebody else apply for the next however long. So I've not done any outreach yet, but again, at the council's prerogative, if you, it'd be a formal motion to waive the requirement. Or to waive the limitation on terms for the planning commission. But if you want to consider that tonight, I can answer more questions, but if something you want to consider tonight and that was approved, then I could reach out to folks that just came off planning commission, see if there's interest.
The only thing I'll say on that is just, I do know of at least one person that I know is.
Still might be there.
Planning to, no pun intended, to put an application in, Council Cracker.
Would this, if we did away with the term, would that be just for this situation or would it be across the board?
Yeah, you could include that in your motion, it'd be just for this.
Instance.
Just for this instance, yeah.
But if there's other people that are out there still going, you know, it's not like it's been open for six months. It's been open for a month over the holidays and a month prior, so. I'm fine leaving off, maybe we'll just hold on that for now, see if we get an application. It's only been a couple of weeks since the actual appointments.
Right, and we have enough people that they can.
We have six now, so. I may come back to you in a month or two, if we don't have any more applications, then I can come back for that time. Thanks.
And congratulations, Kyle. Welcome to the planning commission. All right, next up, we have the budget committee. Again, as a refresher, this one, we had, I think, four openings left. And part of that was because we had several former budget committee members that have now become city councilors. So we have to fill their seats on the budget committee. We received two applications, as you can see here, one from none other than Planning Commissioner Kyle Cup. And then another one from Nicole Hasley, am I saying that right? So again, you can see their application materials in the packet. And. Happy to entertain a motion or to have any sort of discussions, Council Andrade?
And then City Council appoint Nicole Hasley to serve a three year term on the Philometh Budget Committee with the term expiring on December the first, twenty twenty seven.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Council Andrade and seconded by Council Goltler to appoint Kyle Cup and Nicole Hasley to serve a three year term. On the Philometh Budget Committee expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty seven. Is there any discussion on that motion? Dear None, would all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye? Congratulations again. Yes, yes, please.
Just as an employee, if you're reaching out to other folk, I'd be interested. The remaining terms that are left to complete are filling burnt vacancies over there, so there's a one year term and a two year term.
Okay.
So there are no more three year terms. Those are all filled now, so we have a two year term and a one year term. So if you're somebody who's maybe kind of interested, but not overly committed, say, hey, just do it for a year. You know, try for three, one, first a little bit and see how it goes and you can apply for a full three year term if you want.
Your friends with big movement issues, it's a great opportunity.
One year term.
Okay, so now we'll move on to our next item here, which is getting more into the meat of our discussion this evening. Before we go into the actual committee assignments and representative assignments, there were a couple of councils I talked to that kind of wanted to, and also myself. Who wanted to kind of talk about the liaison or representative roles. And try to set sort of some uniform expectations as a body for what it means to be the city's representative to an organization. In the past, we've sort of appointed these and briefly been like, reach out, and then we've kind of never talked about it ever again. And so I think, I just kind of wanted to open the floor, because, you know, I know we're all unpaid volunteers, so I'm not trying to come out here and. Say you have to like put in twenty hours a week with your organization, but I do think it would be good if the council could have some sort of consensus around. What we all agree to try to do as a representative for these organizations. And then the second part of that discussion is if there's any of the sort of roles or assignments that we feel like we don't need anymore. Any that we feel like we wish we had that aren't on that list, any that we want to change, I just wanted to kind of open that. You know, think about this, we can do it next year too, if we're not ready to decide on that right now, but there's nothing, these are not in our city code or our city charter anywhere. These are just something we do every year, so the city council can definitely decide to add or remove or change things on it. Before we dive into the conversation, I'll just kind of give a little background of what usually the representative assignment means. And returning counselors, feel free to chime in if I miss something or staff. Ideally, what a lot of it means is that you'll reach out to the leadership of whatever organization you're assigned to. And then depending on kind of the structure of their organization, it's good to try to attend like board meetings for that organization. I mean, you should see if that's something they're comfortable with. Some organizations will find some other avenue for you to get involved in. But the intent with these roles is to have a sort of a two way street between the city and this organization. So that if they're, you know, thinking about something that they might need city support for, or that, you know, will come before some sort of city organization. You can kind of be there to take that back to us, or if they want to give us a heads up on an event, we know about that. And likewise, if the city's working on some big project that might affect their organization. Or if we're making changes to the budget that might affect their organization, if we're, you know, tearing up Nineteenth Street and you're the liaison of schools, something like that. So it's supposed to be this sort of open line of communication. And it's supposed to be sort of like, you know, board level to board level. Obviously, the staff has those communications, sort of the staff level. But we're the board of the city, so the idea is then we talk to the boards of other governments and other organizations. So that's sort of the general idea, but I wanted to open the floor to kind of hear if that feels like a common consensus, yeah, Council Salsa?
Just some clarification, given that I'm going to be on two committees.
Yes.
Both of which are part of the city, obviously Public Works and Police. And I'm presuming that those are regularly scheduled committee meetings already, in other words.
Yes, so.
Already going to be sort of a calendar item, then that's the meeting. And is there anything outside of that, other than possible action items to bring back here?
Right.
Is there something, is there like a trigger level that I would need to inform you that something's happening? So that if we put it on the agenda, for example. Just kind of getting the lay of the land about that, right?
Yes, great question. So the, I should have clarified too, there's, there's sort of two different things we're doing here. One is the, the committee appointments and then one is the representative appointments. So the standing committees and the ad hoc committees. So Finance Administration, Police, Public Works, Inclusivity and Housing and Economic Development. Those are all city council committees, so we run those committees, they're staffed by our staff. And then things that come out of those committees sort of automatically gets passed on to the city council. And usually, there's, there will be a chair of each of those committees who will be responsible for reporting that. So if you're the chair of the police committee, then you would be responsible for reporting back anything that comes out of the police committee that the council needs to. Along with the staff. So I think the question I was posing was a little more guided towards the representative assignments.
Okay.
For external organizations, not the, the internal committee, but that's a good question.
All right, so segue then.
Yes.
The next part, given I'm part of the CAMPo.
Yeah.
And the E W A P.
Yeah.
Organizations, so is it up to us to reach out to them or do they already, or will they already know that we are going to be put on as a part of their?
I'll know by Wednesday, because I already asked it, who'd you represent? So they want to know, so I'll reach out to them and give them your name, your email, so they'll reach out. They do have set schedules typically and they'll reach out. If it's a smaller group, they'll reach out, trying to find a date.
Right.
Works everybody, so yeah, they'll, they'll probably be in contact with you before you can get ahold of them.
Okay.
And that's not true for all of them. Some of them, you may have to reach out to, right, depending on who it is. But I typically, staff will kind of help with that warm handoff rather than going out of the blue.
Waiting and you're waiting and everybody's waiting and then, yeah.
At least let the director know or whoever the staff person is and say, hey, who's the lead on, they'll be reaching out or could you please reach out to them before you can. Kind of do a bit of a warm handoff.
Mechanism, if there's some action items for me to bring back, do I bring those then to you that then gets put on the agenda, for example? Or is there anything more formal or less formal about that?
So that's a great question. I think that's a good discussion for the council. I think what I see that as is if it's just a report back of sort of, here's what we've been up to.
Okay.
Then we can do that under the, well, we don't have it on this one, because it would be at the regular meeting.
Yeah.
But at the first meeting of the month, there is an agenda item for reports from counselors and.
Perfect.
Committees and everything. And so I think this is probably what I want to kind of see if the council's on board with is to really be a little more intentional about that time, to even kind of go around the room of like. Here's my report from my two liaison roles and here, and just, even if it's a quick little, you know. One minute long, like the school board talked about this and PCS decided to do this. Because I think, again, the, the point is that you're not there as you, you're there representing the city.
Right.
And so I think it's important for all of us to kind of be up to speed with, with what you're hearing and reporting back. So if it's just sort of an update on what's going on and what you've been working on, what you're talking about, I think that can go in that council reports section. If there is an actual action item that comes out of it that the council would want to vote on, then that's something you can go ahead and send to us before.
Because obviously, as a, as a representative, it's not like I'm there saying I've got the vote.
Right, right.
I am just the communication person essentially that connects the two together and makes things happen.
Yes, although on some organizations, so like the one, some of the ones you're on, and like I'm on the COG board. They are their own boards that we are actually members of, because they're like in our governmental groups.
Gotcha.
So those are a little different, like if you're the liaison to the PCS board, you're just there as like to listen and to, you know, chime in.
I see.
You're not a member of the board. Some of the boards like HOPE or the transportation things, the COG, those are intergovernmental organizations, so they're made up of several local cities and counties. And we're a member of that, so that we actually get, the city of Philometh gets a vote. So then those of us who are on those, you're voting on behalf of sort of the position of the city. So that could also be something, you know, in that sort of council reports thing, if you know you're going to have to vote on something at one of those and you're not sure sort of what, you know, you could be like, what do you guys think, if you want?
Right. Very good.
Okay, no, those are great questions, yeah. This is that, yes.
You were asking, and I didn't know what I was going to when I went, so I'm glad you're bringing this up. You're basically a non-voting member of visiting their board meetings. To me, the expectation was I would be there. Uh, to me, the expectation was I would be there whenever I could be there, which was once a month for a lot of them. And if the occasion came that I couldn't come, I would just let the president know of that committee. And they were great, especially the Philomath committees. They're especially welcoming.
They're understanding.
Um, Corvallis, it's a little different when you go there just because you're just one of many. And, um, but again, I can ask questions. I can get a question once in a while, but mostly I just sit and listen.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um.
Just to follow up on that too, if you do have something like a written report, you want to do something a little more formal. If you get that to us by, you know, the Wednesday before the meeting, we'll put it on the agenda just under that reports and we'll just drop it in there so we know where to put it.
Yes.
And then we'll include it with the packets. Everybody has time to read through it a little bit ahead of time.
Yeah, very good.
Oral, that's fine. If you want to write something up and submit it, that's fine. Just give it to us headtime. We'll send it with the packets. We're going to read it.
Perfect. Actually, it was going to be a great question because oftentimes when I was reporting to the board at the fire department, I would write up the report rather than spending a lot of time sort of in the weeds about all of that. They just had it and then they just came down to the questions.
Yeah, yeah.
It made things a lot more efficient that way.
Yeah, yeah.
And if it's just the report, you don't need to necessarily get that like approved on the agenda. It's just a report that you're providing.
Yes, exactly.
You know, just let me know it's coming and, or let Crystal know it's coming and we'll just.
Okay.
There's information more than anything. They won't be necessarily action items.
Awesome. Great.
Action item. I definitely send it that way. Like, hey, the city council needs to take action on this. We'll put it on the agenda outside of liaison reports.
Hey, thank you. Great.
So is that something I think, because I guess part of it is I want to try to boost that piece of being on council a little more of like hearing back from people about what's going, because I always felt like we always approve of these assignments and then who knows what Diane's doing on her, excuse me, Councilor Crocker is doing on her things and who knows what I'm doing on my things. We're all just kind of doing our, and I think we're all doing good work, but who knows? So, um, I just say, I think if we could all try to be prepared at the first meeting of the month, you know, if you have time to write a report, that's great, but I know maybe not everyone, that's their style. So either if you have time to write a little report or you can just be ready to kind of give us a verbal update, just something to kind of make sure the whole council is appraised of, um, just some of the developments. And, you know, maybe your report is like, oh, our meeting got canceled this month. That can be your report. But, um, just, just something so that, you know, we're all kind of on the same page, um, and, and moving forward together. And then, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, um, that what I submitted in the packet, I had intended to briefly speak about it.
Okay, yeah.
For HOE.
Okay, we can, we can get to that. Um, yes, um, and then I think the other thing, just to remind everyone in the city code, when it talks about these things, is just if you're speaking before another body as a representative of the city, to make sure that you express the official position of the city. And if you're expressing your own position, just clarify that that's your own position, not necessarily the city's position. So nothing's barring you from sharing your opinion, but if you're there as a representative of the council, you know, try to do your best to represent the council.
And would that be also true as you volunteer personally and not as a rep, as a volunteer individual, not as volunteering as a city council representative volunteering? Because there are opportunities to volunteer with PCS that we take, that I take them as an individual citizen of Philomath and not as a representative as the city council.
Right, that's so weird. Yeah, I think it's my interpretation of what it has. It's just if you are appearing as a representative of the city, then you should represent the city's position. But if you're appearing as private citizen Theresa Nielsen, you can do what you want. I mean, you know, you should try to, you know.
If I go there and you don't want my tag, I'm going as a community member, as a volunteer in various things.
Yeah, I mean, and it's kind of the same thing, you know, like I, if I, like I put myself as the representative to the school board, but like if Councilor Andrade wanted to go give public comment to the school board as a resident of Philomath, she's welcome to do that. But if I'm there as the city council representative to the school board, I should try to keep my comments as the, what the city thinks. So.
Very good.
Um, yeah.
I expect to, don't, um, just on this first approach, when you reach out to these organizations, just be mindful that some city council members are more diligent about this than others in the past. Some organizations have changed as well. So don't be too assertive or too, uh, kind of an expectation that they're just going to welcome you in and have an expectation that you're going to have a chair at the table. It might take a little warming up to kind of explain the process and explain the reason, kind of what we're talking tonight. So when you do call to introduce yourself or when they call to talk to you about setting up a first meeting, um, just know that you might be the first time that they're having somebody from the city come there. And so just have that mindset. Some are going to be very used to it and familiar. Others may not be as used to having you there. They may be a board meeting, right? There may be parts of their meeting they don't want you to be aware of on the financial side or others.
Sure.
You know, don't be too presumptuous, I guess is what I'm saying, and be more than willing to step back at any time and say, hey, I'm here to serve you as well as the council, whatever I can do to help that, but I'm not here to, you know, push anything. So just be mindful of that, I guess.
And I think Diane mentioned the locals Philomath things. It was really helpful when Councilman Lehman, when I took over PYC, Councilman Lehman, Councilman Lehman and I had a really nice conversation about PYC and, and his involvement and what he saw as his role. And sometimes that's a nice conversation with someone who's stepping out of a position to know what has been in the past as far as, even just familiarizing yours, yourself with what expectations are. Not that means you have to stay with that, but just being familiar makes it, you feel more comfortable in, in approaching them and attending meetings. So, and I just want to say that I've never had to reach out to Dave. I've always gotten an email telling me when the next meeting was and I would just go. And sometimes I had to introduce myself, but it wasn't real difficult for me anyway.
I do think it slightly depends on the, because I know for me, I had the chamber and it was a little like, it's been great, but I think just there hadn't been as much communication and there had been maybe some stuff that happened before I got here that I don't know what, but, you know, I had to be a little softer with the touch at first. Um, and, and I think, like Chris said, like I think the best way to do it, for the intergovernmental organizations, it should be like a staff person reaching out to you and telling you when the meeting is. But for the community organizations, it's best to just kind of reach out and I think just explain the goal, which is what I was saying about that two-way street. The city wants to, you know, be there for you and we want to make sure that we know, you know, what you're up to and how we can support. And then whatever is the best way for their organization to do that with you. A lot of times it's going to a board meeting. Sometimes it might be, like for the chamber, maybe it's going to the luncheons instead of a board meeting or for, you know, going to a volunteer event instead of, you know, so just, just kind of let them help you.
I think you can just let them lead a little bit. Sometimes you have to give them, let them lead where their needs are.
Yeah.
Instead of us making the rules.
Yeah.
Or letting them.
Right, absolutely. Um.
You can always invite them to a city council meeting.
Yeah, well, and, I mean, for real, I think part of it is we are trying to have at that first meeting of the month, have a community organization come and present. So, you know, if they express an interest, you know, let me and Chris know or, and Crystal, and we can, we can plop them on the agenda for later in the year, um, whatever you want to hear from them. So, um, so did that seem like we're all kind of on the same page as far as expectations? You know, will all be ready to kind of report back a little more about what we're up to? Um, and then Councilor Irwin, I know you had, and not to put you on the spot. Um, you had just mentioned potentially a new liaison role. Did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I, I mean, I just asked about, uh, the, the libraries specifically, especially with the upcoming update to the library. It might be appropriate to, yeah, also I really like, I mean, full disclosure, I'm just like trying to pick something. I, I care about libraries.
Yeah.
Um, selfishly, I was like, I wonder why the libraries are on this list. And I was like, oh, they're doing an update.
Yeah.
We'll ask Christopher. So, here we go. Um, so I, I, to me, that feels like a worthy addition. I don't know, I don't know, honestly, I don't, I don't know what the structure of that looks like. So I don't know that, like, what meeting they, we, you know, any of that kind of stuff. But on this, from a high level, it seems like a good idea.
Yeah, so they're, yeah, I mean, they, they have a separate taxing entity that holds in taxes to support the library, but they're housed under Corvallis, um, which is mostly staff. So I don't know that they've got a separate board outside of the board other than, well, there's a friends of the library.
Yeah, so I think it's a great idea, the thought I had, because so there's the Library Advisory Board, which is five members are appointed by the mayor of Corvallis and five members are appointed by the Benton County Commissioners. Um, and coincidentally, I happen to chair that board right now. Um, but I was appointed by the county commissioners before I was like on the city council, so I'm not there as a representative of the city. I'm just there as me. But clearly the city and I have some common interests, so I may represent the city there sometimes accidentally. Um, but I think it might be worth talking with, I think that particular board, like I think that structure where it's five city of Corvallis, five Benton County members is in like an intergovernmental agreement they have. So I don't know if we can insert ourselves into that. But, um, the, there is a discussion going on in that body right now, sort of some restructuring of the library system potentially. Um, and, you know, whether it makes sense to still have it be housed, have like a county-wide service be housed in the city of Corvallis or if that should be housed in Benton County or sort of that thing. Um, so I think if you're okay with it, I might talk to Ashley about it and just see if we can kind of this question be part of that larger discussion, like if we're. See for Philomath and Monroe and LC or something.
It was kind of, the other thought I had was that I know that there's a couple other cities that are.
Right, right. So, um.
Another five from those or something.
Yeah, yeah. So I think if you're okay with it, instead of doing it right now tonight, we might talk with.
Yeah.
Ashley, who's the director of the library and just kind of see what, what she thinks might be the best way to go about that. But I agree. I mean, I think especially with the expansion, it's good to have some sort of, you know, communication there.
Kind of a super feature-rich city. So like, the library is kind of one of the nice things that we have here for people to do and see and, you know, with the absence of theme park and grocery store.
If we get a theme park before we get a grocery store. Gator World or something. Um.
The Ed World.
Okay.
Nutria, Nutria World.
Um, was there any, oh, sorry.
Okay.
Just, uh, was there any other discussion of adding or removing or changing roles or just?
Well, I guess speaking of features, the other feature that really comes to mind is the museum.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Um, and especially since we do have things happening. I don't quite know what the structure is like there. Something to consider.
Yeah. We should have a board. Yeah, yeah, just because of the director. So I think that was a little standard thing. Yeah. Okay, so we'll follow up on library and historical society. Those are good ones.
You know, they are focused on their building here in Philomath right now as well. So the timing on that one is good.
Yeah, yeah, those are good ideas. So is the council fine with maybe me and Chris like following up with the, those groups and seeing what the best way to bend them? Maybe we appoint someone in the summer or something, but yeah, okay. Um, great. With that, we can talk about what the actual assignments are. Um, I hope you all had a chance to look over these. I'll just briefly say that you all actually made this relatively easy because miraculously you all had different interests and desires. So I think everyone got like either their first or second choice and most people got both or their second and third. So I think hopefully you're all relatively happy. We couldn't give everyone everything, but I was worried it was going to be a lot harder than it was. It wasn't like one committee that everyone wanted to be on and one committee no one wanted to be on. It was a pretty good spread. Um, and I did try to take some care in the liaison representative roles to try to make sure that it matched up pretty well with the committees. So like our criminal, criminal justice commission, I wanted to make sure that person was on the police committee or the, um, housing and economic development committee. I wanted to make sure that person was on the planning commission representative. That, so, you know, sort of having some sort of overlap so that people know what we're talking about. Um, but, um, and then there were a few just where, um, there, I think, I'll, I'll say this vaguely. There were maybe some natural fits, um, for certain roles that we didn't want to do just to avoid any type of appearance of conflict. Um, so, um, but I think wonderful, um, roles. So, um, there any discussion or, or? And then I guess, Chris, I know some of these are going to start meeting.
At least we can try to meet this week. I postponed. So that was the thing, we're trying to kind of pull back the curtain and see who's going to be on there ahead of time so we could schedule and, and see where he's there. I believe that, um, chief, you reach out to individual members and kind of do some one-on-ones and then schedule a time that works for everybody. Um, that many will need to get going pretty soon, but again, we'll reach out to you and find a time that works. With these standing committees, we try to really bounty your schedule a little bit more because with only three of you on there, you need all three of you. If two are there, it's just not the same. Um, feels like it's one person short, for example. So, um, we'll work with you on your schedules, but typically, you know, late afternoon, we can do evening if we need to. So we'll reach out when we're ready to set those. They really do only meet as necessary. So we don't really have like every month or every other month on most of those. It's kind of like when something comes up that we need to run through the committee or some comes to council that needs to get referred to a committee. Then we'll spin up the committee and have a meeting. But otherwise, um, again, we try not to be overly burdensome on having that meeting like every month, for example. It's, it's much less than that or should be less than that unless it's something really important that has to take months. Uh, inclusivity, that one is set. I think we're doing the last, yeah, fourth day of the month. So that one would normally meet tomorrow night. We do have to cancel that meeting, which is news to some of you. Uh, but we did not get a proper notice out with that, just with me being sick and too much going on last week. Um, so we'll either reschedule that inclusivity committee.
Oh, gotcha.
So I've got an email started there with some details. We've got my history month next month. We've got a presentation lined up. We've got banners going out. So I think we're good shape for February. It'll just be getting a little bit of a hint on March. Finish that email up. Not tomorrow, it'll be at the Capitol Day, maybe at the Capitol, right? Something like, but anyway. Within the next few days, I'll get that out. But tonight, tomorrow morning, we'll get the notice out to everybody when that meeting's been canceled. But otherwise, they'll be the fourth Tuesday of every month.
Okay.
Housing and economic development, we try to have a set meeting, but again, right now, it's only been about like quarterly right now. Three months to show. Planning Commission is the third Monday and sometimes the first as needed, but mostly it's just the third Monday of every month. And then the others are the representative ones, which you can, you know, kind of reach out.
Yeah.
Reach out to.
And I also should have clarified, for some reason, I left planning commission off of the form I sent out. So surprise, Spencer got planning commission. But if anyone like really wanted that, talk to me. Uh, or if you really didn't want that, let me know. I just, for some reason, it like wasn't on the form I looked at from last time and then I was looking over and I was like, oh, we should have put someone in that. So I just, um, thought you'd be great. And I don't think there's anything else to mention on here, but. So for the Cascades West Area Commission on Transportation, I did the primary and the alternate.
Do we need an alternate?
Well, I don't know if we need one. I just was looking at the membership from the other cities and almost every other jurisdiction had a primary and an alternate and we didn't. So I thought, oh, we can do that.
They seasonally have form issues there, so they like haven't.
Okay.
Second can't be there that I usually end up going.
Sure, sure.
It's not the same having staff on there, so.
Yeah. Um, so surprise. And, uh, yeah, okay, well, we, we do need you all to, um, approve. Sort of like. I think, we didn't put that in the agenda.
We can do consensus, if everybody's good with it, we can just.
Okay, okay.
So we've got consensus.
Perfect, great, wonderful. Then with that, um, this. We'll see what you all think, um, one thing that came up is just. The idea of making sure we're regularly updating our council rules to sort of meet the needs of the moment. Um, this is something LLC talks about, um, and I'm also a big stickler for if it's in the rules. We should either be doing it that way, or if we're not doing it that way, we should update the rules. So that's part of the reason I wanted to go through this, um, and. I think it's also just with, you know, new, new council coming in, new issues the city is dealing with. Um, you know, some things in here were created for specific reasons that are no longer relevant, or now we have new situations that we haven't dealt with. Rules, so um, for the changes that we put in here as a recommendation, these are the things that. The city manager and I kind of put our heads together and came up with, um, I'll just give like a quick overview as we go through. So it starts, um, the first change is on page thirty two of the packet, which um. Want to recognize that we're having pages for the packet now, not just for each agenda item. Um, so we just changed the um, duty of being parliamentarian to be the city recorder instead of the city attorney. Um, and that was because we used to have the city attorney at every meeting and now we don't. So we have the city recorder at every meeting, um, so if we have any questions on parliamentary procedure. Um, someone needs to get Crystal a, um, Robert's rules. She's now in charge of it, or she would be if this is approved, um. So that was just updated to reflect a sort of the reality that we have now of not having the city attorney here every time. Um, we simplified a lot of the um. The detail on sort of adding things to the agenda, um, the one thing. I think I want to add the thing about the unanimous versus like the.
No, I was just looking for that, sorry, I, I didn't get back.
Okay, there's one change we meant to put in here that we could update, um, just saying that. And this is still page thirty two, the, the bottom. Saying that if you want, and so basically the process, if you want something added to the agenda is just let me and Chris know. Like at least a, a week before the meeting and I mean. Ninety nine point nine nine percent of the time, I don't know why we wouldn't grant that. Um, it's just, it's nice for us to know, cause then we can make sure we have all the materials we need and we can prepare for that. So generally, if you want something added to the agenda, let me and Chris know a week ahead of time, we'll put it on there, if there's some reason that like. Chris and I really hate your idea and we don't want to put it on the agenda, we say no. It's a democracy, so you can always come to the next council meeting and then move to add it to a future agenda. Um, and then if a majority of the council agrees with you, um, we'll add that to the future agenda. And so what I would like is to keep it as that you have to add it to a future agenda instead of the current agenda. Um, and then if you need, if there's some emergency that we need to add something to the current agenda, that would require a unanimous vote. And the reason I'm asking for that is just because I think it is in the interest of good governance to make sure we have. Advanced notice to the public and to other counselors and to staff if we're gonna be voting on an item on the agenda. Um, so, you know, if there's something you really want on the agenda and for some reason Chris and I didn't put it on there. You can bring it and um, the council can vote to put it on the next agenda, or if there's something that. You really need immediate added to the agenda. Unanimously agree, it can go on the current meetings agenda, but um, we, I want to avoid situations where. We add something to the current agenda and the public had no idea we were gonna talk about that and we don't give them enough notice or, or anything on that.
My one concern would be any time sensitive issues that like if for whatever reason, we don't have a unanimous. Vote, but it is something very important that maybe the majority of the council would like. How. It, are you just kind of like, oh, well, or is there like? Or do you still have the power to be able to say yes to it in that moment? Like if it was something time sensitive that we didn't know about until, like we had just gotten information about.
I think the city, the city manager adds something, right, or no?
Well, I'm gonna follow your rules as I can, I, I think. I think if you just go with a simple majority to add it on there, I mean, our, you know, my role is not to keep things off of the agenda, the only reason I'm ever gonna try to. Not throw some agendas, the gym is already really lengthy and it's like, hey, let's put it on a couple of weeks from now. Um, or if I feel like it's something that nobody's talked about yet, we need a decision tomorrow. And it is kind of last minute, then I may try to persuade you to, but even then I'll work with you, like. We've done this so many times, different ways, right, sometimes it's an email that goes out to everybody. It's like, minute, here's this topic, it just got brought up by Council on Drady. We're looking to vote on this Monday, if he ever is comfortable voting on it, but it's Sunday and I just got it or she just got it. So here's all the information, we'll talk on Monday. I'm fine if the council's prerogative, even a simple majority to say this is important, it's timely, let's talk about it and maybe even make a decision on it. But that should be the exception, I guess, is the bottom line, I mean, there is a, there is a lot to be said for good governance, give people a heads up, but. Sometimes you don't know about something till last minute and, and if the rest of the council feels as appropriate, then they can, and if enough council members feel like. It's a good idea, but it just feel too rushed on mission, then they'll vote accordingly, so I, I'm comfortable with that kind of language.
Yeah, uh, my main concern is like, is like the not knowing about something and it also being time sensitive. Um, thinking about like if there was like a, a funding situation or I don't know, I. Or, or if some, oh, I know what it was, um, public comments. Sometimes when something gets brought to council and no one knew about it. And we definitely need to talk about it because it's like an emergency or a situation or something like that and. For whatever reason, maybe we don't have. Unanim, unanim, unanimous people. Um, and so that's, yeah. Because if you find out about it in that meeting.
Yeah.
You can't do it ahead of time.
I think it'll have to be worded appropriately because the same thing about when to have it be, when we make that judgment call, when it's majority compared to. When it must be unanimous.
There, cause I guess, there's also, there, there's separate language, maybe in the city charter about. Meetings.
Right.
Um, because I get, I'm a pretty strong believer that like there's nothing that the council really needs to do, like. If it's something that's like that much of an emergency, that's usually a staff thing or the council could call an emergency meeting, like if there's like. The water treatment plant blew up, we'd probably do an emergency meeting anyway, um, that wouldn't be like. I don't, I guess, I don't know, I'm trying to think through.
So one of the things, I want to say when the flooding with Mill Pond and the like the gates and like the, the gate. Was like chicken wire or something like that, and I think we found out in that meeting and like. We're like, oh yeah, we need to talk about this right now, I mean, I don't know if there, I don't.
Yeah, it's, it's just governance, I mean, you, you can. So there's some state laws around um, public meetings and public meeting laws, that's Council. Crocker and Crystal and myself attended a meeting, just last Thursday, wasn't it Thursday? Um, anyway, from the Ethics Commission, uh, regarding on public meetings, so there's, there are public meeting rules and laws on the books for. You know, the appropriate amount of time to give notice for an emergency or twenty four hour meeting notice or forty eight meeting notice. But then, you know, I think the mayor's point is just this good governance piece, right, which is like, do we want to be. Reactive to whatever comes to the meeting, that meeting, or do we want to be like? That sounds like a great idea or a great cause, and if it's a truly an emergency, then let's have a meeting, but if it really is a meeting, a, a topic that needs to be added to the agenda for tonight. We're allowed by state law, we're allowed to add things to the agenda for that night that weren't there, that went out to the press twenty four hours ahead or forty eight hours ahead of time. So the council has the legal prerogative to do that, it's just a governance issue, you know, it's how reactive do we want to be as opposed to how. Intentful or set on the agenda, do we want to be? It's whatever the council's comfortable with.
We could workshop that a little bit.
I would appreciate it and also I'm not gonna. Like go all in on it.
Sure. For what it's worth, I'd be comfortable with either language, I think that we, in a real emergency, we would be in a position to come to consensus. I don't, I mean, at least that's something, I don't get the vibe that we would have an obstruction per se for consensus and then. Uh, otherwise, but I also think that we could probably handle anything that. Without a complete consensus. Uh, we got on the agenda, I think would just be tolerable either way, so it didn't. It doesn't feel like a giant world, I mean, but. Anyway.
I think in practice, this is, I don't, I don't want to guide too much, but in practice. If the reason that you're objecting for something to come before the council that night is because you're opposed to it, you don't want everybody to vote because you're gonna be the minority vote. It's kind of weaponizing the structure of the system to kind of get your way, right, and our. Our council rules are pretty clear that we're, you know, we're using Robert's rules of order, but we're not using the fine points of Robert to weaponize them or to, you know, leverage them to our. Personal benefit or our own benefit, and I, I think if you're looking at, as, you know, a super majority or a majority. To even just have a discussion, that feels like a lot of. If there's a majority, the council wants to add something to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, we do it, if we have to do a meeting and topic comes up and somebody makes the motion to. Add it to the end of the meeting for discussion. And the, the majority of the council wants to do it, majority rules and we'll talk about it, and if we get to ten o'clock and it's late and we need to do a hand pull to see. Do we want to spend another half an hour on this, or we want to punt on this until another meeting, then the council can do that as well, so I. You know, I, I would caution the council of putting hurdles too high that they start to get weaponized a little bit. And I think we could rewrite this section, I could bring that back to just look at just a simple majority. And that, you know, the simple majority of the councils could run which meeting to put it, this meeting or future meeting and just leave that.
Like, a majority of the council can vote to add it to a future agenda item. An emergency or like a time sensitive matter in the council, so just, I, I still want to keep something about it, but yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, but we can figure that out, okay.
Whether, I agreed, I think in, in practice that we probably would come to consensus and also very much, um. I, I, I think words allow a lot and just to be careful of that.
What we intend to this is to put, bring this back to you in the form of an ordinance, which would actually make the official rules. So I can spend some time, that'll put in the ordinance, you'll have plenty of time to review it, it'll have a first read, if we want to tweak the language, then we still can. So I'll make kind of a first go of it and see what y'all think for the next meeting.
Um, any other thoughts on that particular change? All right, on page thirty three, um, this is just. Someone's skipping ahead.
About the previous one, about the, um, the parliamentarian. Does it still imply that the city attorney would be parliamentarian if they're here, cause sometimes we have them here and like. Should we consider having them be the parliamentarian or just keep it as city recorder only?
I guess, the way I would read it is if we're questioning. This, like, that, we could, you could even argue that's like a legal question at that point, like it's the interpretation of parliamentary procedure. Like, I feel like we can still ask this, you can ask the city attorney any question you want, but I think it's fine to keep it as the city.
Yeah, from an consistency standpoint, I think having the one person.
Yeah.
Do that, and like you say, as a, as a, anybody can actually create that conversation.
Right, right.
Well, there's this point of parliament.
Right, right. Yeah, I think it's also, I think it might, it feels like sometimes, yeah, yeah.
Use, use the, use the talent.
Right, yeah, um, I think like sometimes a city recorder like pops in for. One agenda item topic and then pops out and it'd be kind of weird, like, oh, well, no, sorry, Crystal, for this agenda.
Also, in practice, right, we're typically asking, at this point, we've brought the attorney to ask them questions about something in which case. We don't actually want them to set aside being the parliamentarian.
Yeah, also. You say Crystal's a lot cheaper than. At least I don't think we're paying you like two hundred dollars an hour.
No comment from the city recorder.
No reflection of our love for you.
Since you went there, I'll just say, you know, for every parliamentarian, there's an equal and opposite parliamentarian with a different opinion.
That is true.
Wouldn't want to go against Crystal or any parliament.
Perfect, um, okay, moving along then, page thirty three, um, this is just to give us a little more discretion, I think the. The idea that we put in here, the reason I wanted to put this in here, is I feel bad when there's literally one person here. And they're almost done and they're at their three minutes, I'm fine with giving them an extra ten seconds to finish their thoughts instead of being like, stop. Stop when there's no one else here and we have like two things on the agenda, um, so, yeah.
And, and can I just tell you, I've given this a lot of thought because sometimes, you know, when individuals, we don't often. Well, we sometimes have public come up, we don't have it at every meeting.
Right.
And sometimes it's, it's quite the challenge for individuals to come before the council and present what they have and, um. Two points, one, I think it puts a little bit of, there's, sometimes it's, there's an emotional tie to those pu- public comments. I mean, they have a personal connection to what they're discussing with us and, um. I think it's a little bit stressful for the presiding officer in a, in a point where we have numerous public comments. I think that would have to use with discretion because to give an emotional person that's a little more assertive. Four minutes and then the next person is a little more timid, three, and then I, I'm even wondering whether three minutes. Maybe, cause in the past, did we not have more than three minutes, three minutes hasn't been universal for the last twenty years.
Been pretty.
Pretty standard.
Is it pretty standard?
I think we had whatever you want for a while. One of the three minutes, we listen to a lot.
Um, I don't know, I just don't want to be, um. Equity and giving everyone the right amount, you know, what time that they need, but within reason. Um, I don't want to, that's a big thing to pick and choose, well, you're a little, you know, you're yes, you get four minutes, you get three and a half, you get three twenty, you get. I, I think that's sticky for me.
I think in full transparency, the way I would enforce this would be if there's like one or two people, they can have a little more time. If there's a bunch of people, no one gets more time. Um, and I think part of this is just like from working in the legislature, that's kind of how they do it, like if the chair of it, if you're the one person that came to talk on the bill. The chair of the committee will usually let you talk for a little bit, if there's like forty people in the room to talk about the bill, they're very strict about like, your ninety seconds starts now. Your ninety seconds is up next, you know, so I think that's, I don't, you know, it wouldn't be like, I like you, so you get five minutes, I don't like you, so you, you know, it'd just be like. I, I guess, it ju- it, like I said, I just feel bad when. One person showed up for public comment and then we cut them off and there's clearly nothing else we need to really do, so. Yeah.
A number of individuals there.
Right.
And will Crystal be able to tell us if there's people, how many would be online to do a public comment, so we know going in that there are four people online and two people here. Is that, so you know in advance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Worth considering, uh, people who English isn't their first language, having more time. Allotted on purpose or a disability, I know sometimes in. Things where you get an opportunity to speak, it's, I mean, I'm, English is my first language and I, it takes me a minute to get going and. I think if you're searching for words, it could be really, I mean, three minutes is. A heavy lift, or same if you don't, I mean, you, you know, have some kind of a speech impediment or a impaired. Uh, cognitive abilities, it would be really, I mean, it almost insulting, they're trying to get that out in three minutes. And I, I obviously assume we've been operating under discretion. For that already, but maybe.
Been really strict on the three minutes, we really have, just kind of said it, um, it's mostly been. Not mostly, my experience in the ten years I've been here, the only time we've straight for three minutes has been based on the number of people in the room wanting to speak. It really has been there, so I mean, if we wanted to add some language there, that was like based on attendance of the meeting or based on number of individuals. Wanting to speak, then we could have some discretion, but I've, I don't think I've ever seen a mayor presiding. Then we could have some discretion, but I've, I don't think I've ever seen a mayor presiding planning commission. Um, chair, it was like, giving different amounts of time to different people, usually they say at the beginning, there's only a few of you here, so we're gonna give you five minutes each. I'm gonna lie up to six minutes each, there's a lot of you here tonight, so we're gonna hold you to three minutes, sorry, hate to do it, but you know, there's like, again, thirty of you that wanna provide comments. So we're gonna hold you to three minutes, but it's not based on individuals or needs, it's based on time constraints.
To try to put as time allows in there, but councillor Crocker.
I think the safest thing is keep it consistent, um, my first react, or my first involvement in the city council was giving public testimony. And I was told before I came in, I only had three minutes, so I handed my paper off to my husband, so he got his three minutes, but, um. I think if we start making, um, exceptions, then we're gonna have people upset that they don't get the exception.
Councillor.
Um, I, um, couple things, uh, completely agree with you about the like, well, there aren't that many people. Just let them have a little bit of extra time, um, and I know that that is, um. Difficult when, if someone is at a meeting to give public comment, that there are like five other people there. And then they're more strict and they see this, you know, lax enforcement in a previous meeting, like, I understand that. And also, like, I, I do think the setting of expectations ahead of time, as Chris was saying before, like. There are a few of you, you can go a little over if you need me, um, like, I, I think that's perfect. Um, councillor Irwin, thank you for talking about, um, potential needs, I think that should, um. Probably be, like, in this, you know, we, we value equity and inclusivity. If, if we do, then we should have some sort of clause, uh, perhaps in like the ADA part thing, like, if you need. Yeah, no, but I, I don't know if that, if people understand that, that includes more time.
I get.
Go ahead, you're talking, because I wouldn't have guessed that, I wouldn't have thought of that.
I guess, just to, maybe, the reason I wrote it this way was because I felt like this was a way to not have to spell out. A million different things and just ask you to trust me that if there's no one here and someone's talking, or if someone clearly needs an interpreter to just trust me. That I can make a decision to give them a little extra time, this doesn't mean I'm gonna be picking favorites, this doesn't mean I'm gonna be going off the rails, this is just, instead of like having to. It frankly, it just feels a little inhuman to me sometimes, like, there's clearly a situation where we all want this person to have more time, or like, nope, sorry, sorry, sorry. And just, that's why I put this in here the way I did, is that we don't have to spell out things for interpreters or for.
And it's better to give more time than to, how would I say this? You, if you start extending the time limit. Then it gets unwieldy, and then you have to get into the position to say, well, tonight, we could only be three minutes. I know, I know we say five, but we could only, then, then you're, then it just gets unmanageable. And, and I think this gives you the best flexibility, cause you could read the room and read the agenda and then, and read the people. And it all, it, it just all works, personally.
I just thought, I do have some concerns, just based off of perception, you are saying that you're not picking favorites or. What if you're not the mayor, what if someone else comes in, these are the rules, and they are picking favorites? And I, I'm just a little bit concerned that as like the public, that kind of like Jessica said, that you could see a meeting where. I watched that meeting and those people had more time, and then I came to this meeting and I don't have time, that it's not treating everyone the same. Um, I, you know, Jessica, fair point about the ADA statement, we do have this ADA statement for a reason, to help accommodate people. Could we have some additional language that makes it just a little bit clearer, maybe? But that would be only, my only thing is that you're putting, um, it is a potential risk and liability to the city to put that discretion for the public. Which is different than staffers coming in and you having discretion for different time for staff people versus the public, that's just, you know, that. Maybe the language is, oh, like, over complicating it is one thing, but maybe it's just slightly oversimplified, I guess.
Can I just ask, how would that be a liability?
Um, if someone were to come forward and, and say, um, you know, I came to a meeting, you only gave me three minutes. And that they're saying, I didn't get, I did not getting the same public, um, opportunity to speak to the council as this other person got.
You're just being like a perception liability, I mean, cause there's no legal liability there, cause like, we're not required to have a public comment in the first place, right?
You cannot have public comment, or you can have public comment and have it be equal for people, so I think it's just potentially. And, and yes, perception is always, you know, a huge chill, but I'm not saying not to do it, I'm just saying that putting it on. You exclusively is maybe, you know, is it better to have the council say, look how many people, do we wanna? You know, I don't know, without over complicating it, but it's just a couple of things, but as far as the ADA portion goes, I think, um, that we do. We do give people the, you know, opportunity to have accommodation regardless of what that is that they need, so that was my crime, I mean. But Crystal, sorry, pass that forward.
Um, just to clarify, um, I, I agree about the like. We don't want it too, um, complicated, and also, this is probably a little oversimplified. I'm thinking back to, um, the councillor workshop at the LOC conference last year. And how, um, uh, how many issues that have arisen during public comment. Um, and I wonder if it is, like, if you do have to have a number, like, if there's fewer than five. We will allow a little bit of extra time or like people in attendance, something to consider, perhaps something to talk about. When workshopping the other part of this, um, of the, the rules update. But, um, I, I do really want to, and I, and I do think that, that it's okay to have a little bit of extra time. As long as you state it upfront that this is the reason why, um, and that, um. Making it clear that that is the reason and that you're not playing favorites later on, um. And that, um, adding some clarification to ADA or, um. Um, interpreter types of statements that, um, that includes time. Extra time being given if necessary would be helpful.
I just had a thought, in thinking and agreeing with what Chelsea said about liability and things, if we were to do it in a way that. Um, a person public movement making public comment, that three minutes came to an end, and then you mentioned, well, since we have no other permanent, you know. But want anyone else here for public comment, we as, as a council, taking the responsibility just off the mayor, but making it a council decision. Um, we could go to maybe give them another, whatever, you said another thirty seconds or whatever. But then it would be not just a mayor, mayoral decision, it would be a council decision, if you were to say, well, are we in agreement that we will give. So Henry, thirty more seconds on his comment to finish up his thought on this issue. Just takes it off, I mean, I know if I were to have to be the person, if he were absent. You were, I'm thinking of myself here, if you were absent, I would like to say, okay, do we have a consensus, we're gonna give gentleman, um, Henry, thirty more seconds to finish his thought on this. And are we all in agreement? And then you'd say, yea or nay, and then it would be, then the person thing would, would see that we're, as a council, making a decision.
I think that would take more time in the meeting for us to have a consensus, and if like I was the only one that didn't. I don't know, I think fairness is most.
I, at some point, I'm also going to exercise my role as presiding officer to move us along.
That's right.
In that effort, and that's fair, um, I think the problematic language I'm hearing is the discretion part here. And that seems to be the troublesome part, um, if the council were to decide for the rules. We've heard suggestion of maybe putting a number in there to say, for example, the presiding officer may extend this time. If fewer than five speakers are assigned to speak. Announce that, if there's less than five, then there's discretion, that doesn't mean that you're going to give extra time, but if there's less than five, but I do think. To stay consistent, we would wanna state that beginning meeting as opposed to individually granting it to a speaker. But instead to grant to speakers of less than five, that we're gonna allow for more time and stay in that timeline.
I don't like that. I appreciate the thought that went into it, just, I think, because then it almost feels like if there are fewer than five, then it's like, well, now I have to give more time, there's fewer than five people here. And like, what if we have a really packed agenda and we, cause I guess that's why I tried to do as time allows, cause it's not just the people in the room. Like, if we have the world's most packed agenda and we already know we're gonna be here for five minutes or for five hours, I don't really think we should give them more time, you know, like, it's.
It's May, it's still May.
Right, I guess.
Three minutes, period.
Right, right, I think, um, the. I, I guess the spirit of sort of where I was going with this was to try to give a pressure release valve for situations. We might not be able to foresee, and so then I have concerns, I guess, with then, trying to then put in all the situations we can foresee. And the pressure release valve for situations we might not be able to foresee, but, yes.
So then, what if there was a clause that you added that was like, and if the agenda allows, or something to that effect of like.
I guess that's what I meant by as time allows.
Oh, okay, I, yeah.
Yeah, um, Chelsea.
Well, I did want to add that in, when you were saying like, you felt like sometimes things went longer, that there may be a three minute, like, you're three minutes up. And then the council has opportunity to ask questions and interact with that person, so it's not as if, cause that's happened before where you. They're, they've, they've given their, my three minutes up, and then you're asking some clarifying questions, but, you know. You're also supposed to not have a dialogue, but I've seen that happen, I've seen that happen before, where it maybe seems like they're there longer, because that's happening. Kind of at the end, so, you know, that's not necessarily supposed to happen, but it has lengthened.
I'm torn on this, I like the discretion.
I'm torn to you.
The discretion puts you in situations where.
I don't mind being put in that, I'm, I'm asking for that. I'm just saying, like, I, if you're worried about the pressure being on the mayor, I, I think that.
I'm not worried about that.
I recognize that maybe I'm coming at it from a different, I just feel like a lot of governing bodies operate this way and they do just fine. Um, and I worry maybe we're overthinking it a little bit, but, like, the presiding officer already has a lot of discretion over who they call on. And when they call someone out of order and what order the agenda goes in, so I guess giving the presiding officer discretion to let someone speak for another thirty seconds. Doesn't feel incredibly out of line, given the role of the presiding officer, but.
Um, I think the only thing would be that, uh, if there is decision by the council as opposed to the presiding officer. That, again, if we're talking about the after, no after, it would have to be at the very beginning of, hey, we see there's only two people giving comments. You vote, kind of a thing, that's the only thing I ask, is if we do move in that direction, that said, I'm comfortable with the presiding officer. Having discretion.
That's upfront, yeah, as long as it's upfront, yeah, yeah, just if, if there's any sort of discussion about whether or not to allow extra time to individuals. That it happens before they talk, because, um, I think that it, like I said, it'll just. Be more time consuming and potentially just. I don't know, I feel like it would be interrupting train of thought of like, okay, you're, you're done, you're done, no, no, you're done, wait, hold on, like, let's talk. And then, and then the person's like, well, where was I again?
We come back to that.
Yeah, let's move on. Do you have one thing, okay, um. On page thirty-four, um, we're just getting rid of one hour increments, so we're also gonna have one meeting. Um, if we wanna extend it five minutes, we feel like we just have one quick thing we wanna do, if we do wanna extend an hour, I don't know why we put hour in. Great, page thirty-five, just, um, Chris felt like it was repetitive to have, if a motion has been moved, which I think is true, that is repetitive.
This wouldn't be a motion if it hadn't.
Correct, so if a motion has been seconded, um, and then, um, just changing the wording of reduced to writing. A reduction of anything, um, page thirty-six, um, just saying that if you have scrivener's errors. I have councillor Caseman and former councillor, um, Ozzy were the, the, some of our standard bearers for this. Um, and scrivener's errors are just, like it says, they're misspellings, missing comma, missing number, anything like that. Those we don't need to have the council vote on if it's clearly missing typo, um, if you send those to Crystal ahead of time, that's really helpful. For example, councillor Caseman noticed like a small typo on the poverty and awareness, poverty and awareness month proclamation. Um, that he sent to Crystal beforehand, so then she was able to, um, it couldn't fix it in the packet, but it was fixed on the actual physical proclamation. So then the one I signed at the meeting was correct, she didn't have to go print out a new one, so, that's that one, I think that's relatively straightforward. Um, and then, um, just deleting that, um, members of the council can include things in the package. You can do that, anyone can do that. Yeah, I mean, even a private citizen can send something in to be included in the package, so, um, as a resident, you are also entitled to that. Um, and then, we are asking to get rid of the ordinance committee, um, that committee did not met in over a decade. Maybe two, um, and I think that used to be the committee that would draft sort of ordinances that the council would vote on. Now that's something that the city attorney usually does, so the, so for example, if we all love things in here or whatever, we, we agree on sort of what we want. The council rules to change, then we'll send that to the city attorney and then they'll draft an ordinance with the changes that we've asked for. Um, so there's no real need for a committee for that purpose anymore, then that ordinance will come back to the council and hold on it, so. Like I said, I just want the rules to reflect reality, maybe, um, and then the biggest change, which I wanna talk over with you all. Is at the end, and this is a proposal that, oh, sorry, yes.
Well, I was gonna say, if you wanna do this, probably like before that, on page thirty-eight, it looks like. Uh, if you point ten point zero four zero, first paragraph, um. I wasn't quite sure if I understood that correctly, that last, oh, you know what, never mind, as I read it now, I think it makes sense. It's stating what the type of procedures are in that municipal code, is that correct? Okay, for whatever reason, I read it as slightly different, okay, nevermind.
Perfect, uh, so before I go into the detail on the strategic plan piece, I wanted to explain kind of the vision. Um, just to see if we agree on the vision or not, and then, then we can go into the specific. I'm not married to the wording, um, basically, for folks who are new and folks who are returning, chime in. We have, the city has a strategic plan that the council reviews at the beginning of every year, kind of springtime. Um, and we add items to the strategic plan, staff takes off completed items, um, and then the idea is then. Sort of the guidebook for the year, what staff focuses on, what the city's priorities are, um, and it helps them make decisions outside of council meetings. Where, you know, if they have an opportunity to fix this thing in a park or to put in a new sidewalk and they work in the. The council prioritized putting a new sidewalk, so they're like, okay, that's what we'll focus on, and they don't wanna come back to us with those kind of things, the roadmap for the year. Um, something I've felt like in the past, and I've been guilty of it for sure, so I'm not trying to put blame on anyone else, is then. Sometimes councillors will come up with great ideas throughout the year and then will amend the strategic plan throughout the year, which kind of defeats the point of the strategic plan. Like, can you imagine following a map that keeps changing? Um, so the idea here is. So the idea here is not to restrict like the council's ability to do things, but, and obviously if there's emergencies, we deal with emergencies. Um, but for the strategic plan specifically, follow a process where we schedule a few city council work sessions at the beginning of the year. Where the council reviews the strategic plan, we talk about what the goals and priorities are for the year, and then the council as a group. Decides on the, um. Goals and objectives by consensus, so we can do this, you know, that we don't have to vote on every single, but like. Goals and objectives by consensus, so we can do this, you know, that we don't have to vote on every single, but like, oh, yeah, I like that, let's add that kind of a thing. Um, so we decide goals and objectives and we'll go over this at our retreat, I think on Wednesday, what those look like, but. Those are sort of the broad, I like, directions we wanna go, so it's not like install a stop sign at the corner of blah, blah, blah and blah, blah, blah. That's that's not a goal or objective, the goal or objective would be like increase pedestrian safety by slowing down traffic or something. And maybe that involves putting a stop sign at the corner of here and here, but. Goals and objectives, and then once we finish adding those goals and objectives, we turn that over to the city manager and the management team. They go through that and then they come up with action items for those goals and objectives that they feel like are. Reasonable in the next time period that the strategic plan is for. Keeping in mind things we've expressed in those strategic planning sessions, so you know. If we all express that we really all want some specific thing, they'll do their best to try to incorporate that, um, yeah.
Um, just not to bypass, that's an important part of that, of the council's role is gonna be prioritizing those goals and objectives as well. Because it's, I fully anticipate that there'll be more goals and objectives and we can get to in any given year, that's good, we want the long term roadmap. But we also want you to prioritize those goals and then prioritize the objectives under that goal. Because we won't get to all six of them, but we sure as heck are gonna get to the first couple, and so we'll come up with those action items. That match those highest priorities, and again, it's a five year plan, so eventually. Things that are three, four and six are gonna work their way up, or they may get, you know, leaped over as happens. Every year, an important part of this process will be the council setting those priorities as well and being very clear. Cause I tell you now, the strategic planner now has goals and objectives, but they're not necessarily prioritized other than. When somebody came up with the idea, that's when we put them at the bottom of the list, but we never really go back through and resort them or renumber them based on council's current priorities. So we'll be going through that again Wednesday night at the retreat, um, working specifically on goals, objectives, and then prioritization of those goals and objectives.
Thank you for that, so again, once the council has finished that process of setting goals and objectives, prioritizing them. We hand that over to the staff, they have. A certain amount of time to um, come up with action items or sort of specific things that they'll they'll plan to execute. Under those goals and objectives to help us realize them, and then they'll bring that back to the council for like a final sign off of like, yeah, we like these. Go ahead, go out and do it, and then the crucial part is, and we don't touch it after that, um, the until next January. And I think I'm I'm trying to do that in a way to help both both of us, the staff and the council be successful. I wanna try to view it more in like, and I don't wanna, I don't mean this in a negative way, but almost if we think about it like. Our staff is like a contractor, right, when we sign a contract with a consultant or something, we put in the contract. Here's what we want to get out of this, here's, you know, the resources you have to do it, here's the timeline. And then we hand it to them and then they come back and they give us updates and they tell us how it's going and they deliver the final product at the end of the contract. And so that's kind of how I'm hoping we can use the strategic plan is at the beginning of the year, we go through, we update the goals and objectives, staff comes back with action items. The council says that looks great, and then we let them run with it, and then that brings us into the next piece of that quarterly basis. Where we'll have a strategic plan review, um, which will have. Yeah, and hopefully then we will also incorporate the department heads in there, so any of those action items that fall under public works, Kevin will come give us an update on. How those are going, any of the action items that fall under the police department, Gersky will come give us an update, um, so that we're not, this isn't the time for us to like. Change it or to, but like, okay, good, glad this is going along, or well, we thought we'd be able to get this done, but. You know, costs have doubled, so we're gonna have to put this off a little bit, like, okay, that's good to know, so that the council, so that we can communicate back to our constituents sort of for progress and everything. But that doesn't mean we have to. Manhandle it, for lack of a better term, so, um, and then the last piece there, then I'll I'll get to you, just. Um, I I I really wanna be conscious again, cause I've I've been there of like, if you do have a great idea throughout the year that you wanna add to the strategic plan. You don't, we can talk about that, but then what the response would be is we would keep a running list of those throughout the year. So then next January, when we come back for our next council retreat and work session for strategic plan. Chris and I will pull up the running list of ideas everyone had throughout the year, but do we still like these, do we wanna incorporate these into the strategic plan for this upcoming year? So if you have an amazing idea for some city project in. May, that doesn't mean we pull out the strategic plan and add it to the strategic plan in May, we add it to our list and then next January, we pull that list back up and say, okay. Is this something we wanna do in twenty twenty six, do we wanna add it? So that's my vision for the strategic plan, um, I'm curious to hear if y'all like that. Or or sort of in the general scope, um, and then if so, we can move forward with this language, but, yeah.
This is actually very common practice, I have to say, it's uh, especially in the, as you say, in the world where we do. Lots of work with contractors and contractors and things like that, and we know the the consequence of going outside the strategic plan is generally very costly. It's costly in time, it's costly in, and then slipping other schedules in order to sort of jam it in there, and it's. The the fact of the matter is, is if you take a really good approach at 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 your strategic plan. It naturally calls for more ideas to rise during that period. But then you can fold into the next revision of the strategic plan, so I I think this is a, I think this is a very good. Direction to go, again, just to keep our own sanity as well as with cities. Um, and not have everything sort of, not being a reactive but a proactive. Um, approach to being able to manage, you know, the direction that we're headed. And that you're trying to turn the ship so quickly that, you know, it's just a lot of unintended consequences fall out, right? And the last thing I'd say is that old fire chief from Phoenix is Alan Brunnasini, he said a. A bad plan is no plan, a worse plan is two plans. So if you stick to the plan and you accommodate the plan, that's generally how things go.
Um, has somebody been keeping a list over the last year or two, do we have that to start with this time? Or how do we add things to the strategic plan that we're gonna discuss Wednesday night?
We're in a little bit of that habit of just doing them. And not, either we add them to the strategic plan or we don't, and we just do it, or. But I don't know about or, no, I don't have a list of things that have come up during the year that we. Hold on to the strategic plan, but we have said that before, so hopefully you have lists of things that you're still wanting to do. But no, I think that'll.
And can we bring those up Wednesday night? There's not a already published list that we can't add to.
No, no, no. And and you know. You know, Wednesday night, I mean, we'll we'll have some time to talk through the circle, too much to talk, but absolutely bring your ideas. Projects, but make sure that those projects are gonna be championed by you when we start talking objectives and goals, right? If a priority goal is like a fourth priority goal, you've got a project that you're hot on. And the rest of the council's like, this is like fourth in the list of priorities. We may not get to it, it's gonna be on the strategic plan, it'll be a list, it'll be a project, but if it's a priority four and one of our goal areas. We may not get to it, it may not make the list of action items we're going to use here, but it doesn't mean we, there isn't any place for it in the strategic plan, and our current strategic. Several things that are listed for a year out, two years out, three years out, just cause we know we're not gonna get to it for that long already. We're just gonna structure a little bit differently, and on that note, one of the conference sessions I attended last summer at the City Banders Conference. Um, was on strategic, a strategic doing process, and it was basically our strategic plan that we're doing and. It's put on by the smaller city that had just done this process and had a lot of success with it, so they were very, very excited. But there was some short sightedness to several aspects of us, I'm like, yeah, we doing that better and we ought to do that and we would do that differently. One of the things I really, really liked that I took from that session was they have a strategic doing list. That they publish after the strategic plan's been adopted, that's not fourteen pages long, it is a one pager that they publicize and give to the community, say. Here's what we're doing this year, which is kind of what the council used to do was, let's have a one year goal of, let's make up things that we wanna do this year. But there was no strategy to it, it was just who's elected and what are the top five or ten or fifteen things you wanna do? But there was no strategery in why we were doing and when we were doing that. This kind of combines it, we're still doing our strategic plan and it's still gonna be a multi-year plan. But we're going to limit that down to what are we gonna do then this year that's in line with those priorities? And those objectives and the goals that we've got, and then that's, let's publish that all day long and then we can point to successes and at the end of the year, we can say, wow, look at all that we got done. Won't get everything done, maybe we will, but you know, there'll be some tweaks in there, but. At the end of the year, we'll be able to, you will be able to go to your constituents and say, here's what I did for you this year, this is what the city council achieved. Which isn't something that our current format of strategic plan really lets us do very well. As was said, I just take them off the list and put them at the bottom of the appendix, and if you read the appendix, it's like, wow, I got a lot done.
So, um, the only thing I'm I'm concerned about or interested in is this, there's a lot happening in the first quarter. If you know, that one or more meetings to look at the the. And then get consensus, and then we have city manager, and then we have back to the council, is the one quarter, is that timeline gonna work for us?
Yeah, the strategic plan is based on the budget year, right, not calendar year, so we're doing it. What's really, what on here is quarter one, I would, you know, first, fourth, first, whatever, two months of the calendar year. But the but what we're building starts in July, right, so our our, we'll be using fiscal year for all of our goals and objectives, so. It gives us time, January, February, even into March, to get it built, get it settled. Some of those items are gonna have budgetary impacts, so they need to be done that first part of the calendar year, so we can roll them into the budget. So when we come to July with our new budget, we know what projects we've got in store for the year, so I think this time. Makes her busy when we have new members coming on, but doing it without going members doesn't seem great either, and so. I think it's a good way to get new council members involved right away and feel like they've got a say and they've got some ownership and what's going on in the strategic plan, and so I, I think it will work.
And could we request that running list of proposed, so that it's not, nothing saying that I can't keep a record, but. To have a running list of of proposed, could we have something that this staff could. Order organize a running list that we could then be shared, that could be shared with us?
Yeah, and one thing you'll see Wednesday is we've got a new format that we're using at the management level. That lists all of those goals, objectives and action items, who they're assigned to, what part of the calendar year we're gonna be working on them. So it would be very easy on that shared document that we have to just add a running list after council meetings or when you have an idea or whatever, so.
There's been often, we've had talks and that's a great, and we're like, oh, that's a great idea, remember that, okay, remember that, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, what was that, we talked about that, it was a really good idea and I loved that and, um, so if we could. Suppose that it would be nice to have.
Just really quick, one thing that, just kind of going off of that, one thing that I'm really excited about with doing this now. Is this is the first time we've all had four year terms, um, well, other one. Just because I think that really helps in the strategic planning process, cause I think part of this, part of this was like, if you were only gonna be on the council for two years, you like. You wanted your thing done now, screw what the old council said, I want my thing now, whereas now, we all can look out a little more and 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 be a little more patient of like. Oh, I had an idea, but like, yeah, we can wait and put it on the strategic plan in January, because it's not like I'm leaving the council in January, you know, you have a little more time to kind of. Slow down and do it right, um, and and finish out some of the things the previous councils put on there while you're adding things for the next council to do and kind of. Having that continuity, I think this this format works really well with the longer terms, but, um, council, do you have any?
Oh, uh, yeah, thanks, I just. Had to say, I love all of this, um, and I. Oh, um, for adding the things to the strategic plan to consider. During a meeting outside of the strategic, like during, um. A council meeting in like November or something like that, and like, oh, I like this idea, is that something that? It says here that, you know, um, council would come to consensus and then it would get added. But I wasn't quite sure if that's something to. Like if we can just submit an idea to be considered at a future strategic plan, if it doesn't have to be.
I mean, I think the other thing is like. You're welcome to bring up anything during a strategic planning work session too, so like, I think. The way I view it is we'll be very casual with the running list, it's like, here's a list of ideas people had. What do we think?
Yeah, I just, it, the way that it said on here, it made it sound like we had to come to consensus outside of it in order to.
Right, I guess.
Added to that. And and so I wasn't. Quite sure if that's necessary, um, or like. Because I might have an idea and I might forget about it. But if I send it ahead of time and be like.
That's fine.
So I wonder if we shouldn't have that specific language or?
I think it works with the, this was basically if you're in a meeting and someone's like, wait, what if we painted Applegate Street blue? Can we put that on the thing and everyone else is like, no, we're not, we're not gonna do that, then we won't add it to the list of things for next year. Like if you have a, you know, three AM thought, you're like, wait a minute, I think you can still email me and Chris and we'll. I think we can be, we can be flexible with this.
Yeah, and then those two is, you know, if it's a really, really good idea and it's gonna be minimal staff time and there's huge upswing and benefit to the city. We can still do it, it doesn't have to be in the street, you know, we don't have to change the strategic plan to do something that's. Makes a lot of sense to do, right, so if you've had that idea or that opportunity comes to us. Then it's just offsetting, it's like, well, how much staff time, we're talking about how much money we're talking about, how much impact is gonna have, what are the opportunity costs? What isn't gonna get done if we're doing this instead? And if we, it makes sense and staff's on board and the council does it and we'll just do it, and we don't necessarily have to go back in and then change those strategic. We wanna minimize those, but opportunities arise, stuff comes up that I can't, you know, something's gonna happen nine months from now that I can't see today. That's okay, right, and so we'll just, we'll do those, I don't, I don't wanna get too, I I know that we've. I have hounded like, if it's on the strategic plan, we don't do it, but the reality is, when opportunity knocks, you gotta open the door.
Well, and I think part of it should be, we should look at those opportunities through the lens of the strategic plan, like, if one of our. Goals or themes or objectives is like building the economy and some huge opportunity comes up for economic development. The council has already stated that is a goal, so you know, even though that specific big economic development opportunity wasn't on the strategic plan, like. It still aligns with sort of what we've prioritized, whereas if we, you know, prioritize economic development at the bottom and some big opportunity comes up, Chris might be like, well, this is great, but like. I need to spend my time on things the council's prioritized.
Yeah, I have one quick question, um, do we? Use the strategic plan to evaluate staff performance?
It's one of the metrics.
Half, really, it's about half, but half the questions are, you just evaluate me.
Yeah.
My evaluation, about half of it asks questions about the strategic plan and my ability to fulfill the the um, outcome.
So that I feel pretty comfortable with that. Plan then, because I feel like it's pretty unfair to.
Oh, I'll just point it out. That's pretty transparent, I I don't think I've ever.
Warren's analogy, like, if we were handing these things off to a contractor saying like, oh, and could you also? Since you're already gonna be in the kitchen, what if you just put up a little bit of? You know, since you're already building the road, could we get the cool reflectives, you know, like, it doesn't work that way and it's unfair to then evaluate. Chris is, uh.
I've never been unfairly evaluated based on the past, and like I said, we've had some flex, much more flexibility. This is talking about, but I like the way it's just headed.
I do too, it just gives you, I think it it sets you up to be able to knock it out of the park and say like that, I'm meeting the objectives that you set for me.
You're gonna put us on a quick, like, five minute recess just because we're. So, um, we'll start again at eight. So, um, we'll start again at eight fifty. Okay, calling us back to order at eight fifty-three. So we're wrapping up our discussion on the, um, council rules. It sounds like everyone's pretty good with everything except there's still some. Disagreement on the time limits. Is that accurate? Is everything else we're pretty happy with? Okay. Let's, if the council's comfortable with it, then how about? The city management, I can take this back, workshop it a little bit, um, and then see maybe where we land, um.
A little bit behind closed doors. We'll get the orders pulled together and bring it back.
And if you were gonna workshop the simple majority, you can.
Yeah, and that one was just partly. We had some languages didn't make it in here, so we'll, yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, but yes, absolutely. So is there, there's consensus on that? Okay, wonderful. Then we'll move on to our next agenda item, um, the legislative agenda. So again, for some background tomorrow, um. Well, myself, the city manager, councillor. Andrade and councillor Crocker, is that right? Um, we'll be heading up to the Capitol and, um, I know. I appreciate that there was a lot of interest in that, so we'll switch it up for next year, but, um. This is part of the LOC City Day at the Capitol. Um, it's a chance for. City leaders from around the state to get together in the morning. We meet at the convention center. According to the agenda, there'll be some remarks from the governor and the legislative leaders. Um, you get to, you know. Chat with other city leaders about what's going on in their, their cities. And then in the afternoon, we head over to the Capitol itself. Um, and we meet with our legislators, which Fulham with is a small town, so we only have. One representative and one senator. Um, so that makes it relatively simple. Um, but, um. Part of this is that we, you know, we wanna make the most of that time. Um, and. You know, it's always good to just have FaceTime, but we also wanna come prepared to talk about what's going on in our town and, um, any sort of. Requests or things that we wanna advocate for. Um, and again, this is not like, you know, partisan political advocacy that we're doing. Um, this is on behalf of the city. What does the city need? What does the city want? Um, and that can be both. For policy issues as well as for, um, budget issues. Um, the LOC does a lot of lobbying on behalf of all cities on a lot of policy things like. Recreational immunity and the transportation package and, um, TLT funding, sort of like things that affect every city. Um, so we aren't planning to drive home on those things because, um. LOC has lobbyists that get paid a lot of money to go talk about those things on our behalf. Um, we wanna talk about things that are very specific to our community. Um, so this is sort of what the city manager thought would be worth sharing with our legislators, but. We wanted to get the council to sign off on it to make sure we are speaking on behalf of the city. Um, so we wanted to give an update on the Struvan Park improvements, since that is something the legislature funded previously. So. In the same way, we want. Updates on our strategic plan. We feel like legislature deserves an update on how that project is going. Um, so you can see what the city manager worked up here, sort of giving some photos of how that project is moving along as well as some updates about. The increasing costs for completion there, just so our legislators are aware. We wanna advocate in support of legislative fix to ensure that we can continue to. Publish our public notices in the Fulhamith News and that other. Small cities can continue to publish their public notices and other online news distribution. Sites and, and publications. Um, I know this is something that I think Yahad's has reached out about. Um, there's, and we're not the only city that's been in this boat, so. I think both Senator Anderson and Representative Gomber are aware of this. They both filed bills on it already. So we're just kinda trying to drive home that, you know. This is something that we have dealt with directly that makes a big impact for us, um. As opposed to some of the LOC priorities which impact us, but they impact everyone. This is sort of a Fulhamith. Yaha, it's sort of, you know, our specific type of community issue, um, and that, that affects us. And then.
But I think we really, on that one personally, as a councillor, I really feel we strongly support. I think I would like to really emphasize that the, the impact on our city.
Stand up and support.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Glad that councillor Crocker's gonna be there, you know, but I would just like to emphasize that that's not a. I would like to say we strongly encourage and support this. Cause I think it is vital to small cities like ours.
Absolutely. And I think, I mean, I totally agree and I really appreciate you emphasizing that for all of us. And I think. You know, city manager and I just talked about, we, I feel like we can give some good. Examples of why that really makes a difference for our community. You know, it's not just us trying to save a buck. It's not just. Us trying to support a local business. It's also. That that has more readership in our, like if you want public notices to go out to the public and again, the interest of good governance, make sure the public knows what we're talking about. The way the current laws are written, there's some legal ambiguity over whether we can do that. And that's not what the legislature wants. So. I think we're well positioned not only to talk about. That we really care about it, but also to give them some good evidence for why it's important.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And it's fairly brief here, just because we know we're only gonna have a few minutes with them. So. We'll follow up with their staff and I'll give them our numbers on what we're spending on public education and what we're. You know, we've, and we've been through this fairly recently with Fulhamith News and we've got good data from Fulhamith News on their readership and. Number of members that are subs, you know, subscribing and, and those kind of legal definition. Right now it's the legal definitions are getting in the way. Cause somebody who's giving a voluntary membership isn't counted as a subscriber per the legal definition of a newspaper subscriber. Which is kind of irrelevant on whether they're actually reading the paper or not, or reading it online or not. So. There's some legal things that this cleans up, which will be nice. But again, I'll follow up with staff with more detailed. Do we know to follow up?
Just really quick, I think the other thing to know from like the legislative perspective is I think. This was a law, I mean, this is, this is sort of amending a law that was passed in twenty twenty-three and the intent was to allow. Smaller rural communities that don't have a daily newspaper to use online publications. And I think. We're just trying to point out some little tweaks that maybe they, you know. Not, I don't wanna say missed, but like that, you know, didn't work out the way they were hoping. So. The legislature has already expressed a desire to do this. We're just helping them actually make sure it's working.
Do we have any, um. Um, statistics on how many people in Fulhamith get the Gazette Times? I don't think it's very many. And I think that would be good information just to back up our, our desire to make this. The one and only main one.
It, it would be good. They keep that very close to the chest, I think.
How nice of them.
On that note though, I do think it makes a really like good equity point of, well, they have a paywall and for those who can't afford, like. Can access the Fulhamith.
Yes.
And so like you're. Just automatically going to have more people.
Yeah.
I had a question about Struvan Park or do you wanna wait until after?
Let me just go over the next one and then we can kinda talk about, just since those are both the infrastructure pieces. And then this was something just in your conversation with, um, Senator Anderson's staff, they, along with. I think a lot of legislators, you know, they're still very focused on housing and on, on bringing down the cost of housing, um, trying to. Be able to develop more housing. Um, and something they focused on in the last session, and I think they'll be looking at again is. Um, you know, the legislature isn't gonna go out and build houses, but they're very interested in what is the barriers to? Developers building houses? What are the barriers to cities allowing that? How can they help kind of get rid of those points? Um, and so on the. Right. And so on the next page here, um, this is a really important choke point that. The city manager, the director identified, which is a new sewer main along Nineteenth Street. Um, which can open up. A lot of land on the port side of the urban growth boundary to potential housing. Um, and it's land that. I think there is a desire to build housing on, but right now we don't have the infrastructure to support. That, um, if you. Housing there, um, you would not be able to flush your toilet, which would be an issue. So this is, I think, a kind of honestly like a perfect example of the type of things the legislature's looking for where. If they can invest a few million dollars in a new sewer main and new sewer infrastructure, it can unlock. The potential to really expand, um, people's ability to find affordable places to live. Um, and obviously, you know, we will, this is. Our support for this is in no way any sort of planning approval of any future development up there or any land use decision. But right now that's kind of a moot point because even if someone did. Come before a planning commission and want to build something up there, we don't have the ability to provide sewer services to it. I'll talk a little bit about this and then I'll turn it over to you, but, um. Right now, all the sewer that comes in from that sort of part of town has to come down. Is it Twelfth Street or?
Comes down twelve.
Yeah, um, comes down Twelfth Street and that's. Getting close to being at its capacity for the type of pipe and pump station you have there. So any additional development, um, would, would basically max out that sewer line. Um, so that's kind of put like this artificial cap on. How many people can live? In our urban growth boundary, um, not because we don't have. Places for them to go, not because we don't have the desire for that, but just because they literally can't flush their toilet. So this would help overcome that, um. And you know, five million dollars, that is a. Where if a developer were looking at building housing, but then we said, oh yeah, totally, you're welcome to build housing there. You just have to. Pay five million dollars to put in a new sewer line. They'd be like, oh, okay, we'll go to a different town. So, um, but it is kind of that perfect sweet spot for the legislature where, you know, then they can, they can swoop in and try to help. Fund infrastructure that will benefit both current residents and future residents, um, with all of our resiliency and then, um. Ability to have more housing. So.
Sounds like it'd take a lot of pressure off of twelve then too, right? Guess.
Not necessarily. I mean, the, the main choke point's the pump station, pump station A, which is inside the Pulp Works. All pound, the Pulp Works yard. So there can still be more development in the area, kinda this west end of town. There'll be some more infill. But all of that infill is projected to go up pump station A, so we can't take any. More from everything north of Twelfth Street where this shaded area is. All of that is supposed to go to a pump station, we'll give it out at, at Newton Creek. So everything on the north end of town and E is supposed to funnel its way down to the second pump station, New Creek Pump Station. Um, so it's not, you know, it's not like Twelfth Street's overburdened at this point. There's still capacity twelve. But it's gonna take all of the infill, but still on that end of town that hasn't happened yet. So yeah, and it's based by, this is out of the sewer master plans. So these are the sewer basins, they call them. So like you'd see like N A B, N A C, so essentially basin eight. And basin seven. Um, there's some basin six as well, but that's all industrial. The shaded area is just the residentially zoned. Area that would be fed by this where there's additional industrial like in eight A, the mill site, all of that mill and then everything east of nineteen. Would also benefit from it, but that's clearly industrial and I really wanna focus this on what housing or.
And is there a reason it doesn't go all the way to Main Street when it comes down? Is that, that was the mapping of the?
That's where the, um, existing sewer line ends is right there at College. So there's a sewer line there that it would tie into. It's a four. No, it's fine. So it'd start there and then go north.
And the five million dollars.
I just really quick, we are. Per our council rules, we are past our appointed hour of adjournment. Is there consensus to extend until no later than nine thirty? I thought it was nine.
Oh, great, okay.
And the five million dollar, if that's a twenty twenty-five cost, is that what you're, that way has twenty twenty-five there? If that's the, what their, their estimate is for twenty twenty-five? And is that gonna be an ask? And, and is that going to be an ask?
Yeah, any other discussion on the, the sewer chunk of it? Um, then the last thing we wanted to touch on, we just, that we'll kind of give a. One of Representative Gomberg's focuses for the session is emergency preparedness and public safety. Um, and the Fire and Rescue District has been working on a new training facility, and they've already had some conversations with them on. Um, seeing if the state can ship in any funding for a new training facility. That's obviously not the city, but we want to be good partners, so we're not going to have a presentation about that, but we're just going to kind of. Mention that we support it, where we, yeah, that we're, you know, we, we've, obviously, it's in the city's interests to have well-trained firefighters, so.
Fueling station. Will be a shared fueling station, station for public safety, so fire, EMS and police. So in time of emergency, we would have our own gas station essentially. That would have underground tank, it would have fuel stations so that we can continue to fuel our police vehicles and. Rather than going to the same fuel station that everybody else is going to that aren't getting fuels resupplied, so. It, it would be something that we would utilize on going through every week, I mean, we would use it as an active fueling station. But the storage capacity would be there that in a time of emergency, our, our vehicles and our. Still have gasoline. I haven't priced those out yet, um, it's, it's not a uncommon project for cities to take on. Um, it's kind of a luxurious one that wealthy cities do, just because it, at some point it makes more sense to get your own fuel and. Just have your own fuel for your own fleet, um, but there's an. Little there that they can take advantage of in a much larger city, that for a smaller city, the cost probably isn't there on a. Just a day-to-day operations basis, but when you start talking. It's a lot of sense to have fuel for vehicles during a time of emergency, so, um, I'll do some more digging on. Numbers and see, but mostly I want to bounce that off of them, just say, hey, what are your thoughts on funding something like this in Fulham through the legislature? They may have some state programs that they're familiar with, um, that other of their jurisdictions have used and things, so. That's just a very quick talking point, just to get it on the radar and see if they're getting. Because they may champion, be like, hey, I've got three others I'm doing. It's a before, done, right, so I just don't know, we're just going to put it on the radar.
Yeah, so those last two aren't like hard asks, they're just sort of, by the way.
You have a, um, an idea about where you would locate that, for example. For balance that has it in their courtyard, they have their best, where their fueling station is all of.
I haven't looked at that. Somewhere back behind the fire station, probably, just for ease for you guys to fuel up and. Somewhat secure as well and so on, I don't know.
We have that, we have that big ton of plot of land out there and get the elk centered eating.
Kind of generated there already, so there's some benefits to locating there, but I haven't looked that far yet. Um, I did mention the KNC, but it was kind of this level of saying like, hey, here's a project I've been thinking about for the last five or six years and.
So, yes, councillor Javi.
To clarify, if the last two are not hard asks, um, but then on the update. I didn't see any language that said requesting more funds, so. What, I thought it was, is it just an update? I was just sort of like more information about that.
So.
Cause you said also something about rising costs and I was for about how that might have set that back the project.
I, yeah, this is, no, it's a good question, I'm trying to pick my words, um, I think we. We, we want to give them an update and we want to be honest about where we're at and that we are moving forward with the project, but. Right, as it stands right now, we don't have the funds to complete it. Um, the, the Froggen Rodeo is working to do more fundraising, um, I think. To be frank, that's a little bit more kind of testing the waters, we don't want to come to them and be like, remember when you gave us this money for this project, we said. We didn't complete it, give us more money, you know, we want to, we want to be like, hey, we're working on it, you know, and then if there's an appetite to kind of finish that up. Um, because that's something that, I mean, a, a lot of jurisdictions, even the state government has been running. Or they're remodeling and like making the Capitol like earthquake safe and like accessible and. Also that like sixty-five million dollars, because like construction materials and inflation and everything, so like, they understand how it's going. But that was kind of the approach there was to give them an update, be honest about kind of where we're at and the, you know, the gap. Um, but not necessarily sort of make a hard ask if there's not an appetite to give more money, more money to the same thing they already. Is that fair to say?
Primarily the, like the north and east side.
The west side's getting done, the announcer stand, the lighting, um, is all getting done, but the north and the, and the rebuild. Something got burned, that's what we're fundraising for still. And the way I see it, my timeframe is let's get the west side built, let's, you know, essentially double the capacity, which is. Said we want to do is increase capacity, so let's increase the capacity, maybe not to the full extent that we were hoping to. But let's increase capacity, get some money coming in, get that product there, get some pictures. And then maybe in a year or two, we come back to the legislature and be like, hey, here's the additional fundraising we've done, here's the, you know, phase one of the project that I've done. And maybe in a couple of years, it's a more appropriate time to see if there's a little bit more. It seems a little early right now to go back and ask for funding, when we haven't spent the money that they gave us. And, you know, retrieve rodeo tickets might help.
They're under fifty dollars. Any, any other questions or, oh yeah, please.
Do we know how much more is needed? Like, I don't, I don't know like anything about the project besides whatever we last heard, which was.
Um, I've got to finagle this a little bit, because we've added the bathroom project, you know, too, which is like an eight hundred thousand dollar grant, that's bathroom, but it has a little overlap. So I have to tease out exactly where we're at right now.
Yeah, of course.
I, I, rough numbers, I believe it was about, about four million was, I think, total project, but I think that included the eight hundred other bathrooms.
Okay.
So if you do that, plus minus the eight, then you're like another one point two, I think is what we're like short officially.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious, because I wasn't sure if there had been like additional updates since then about like increasing costs and stuff and.
You know, the numbers the frolic was using came from the engineering firm that actually builds the bleachers and grandstands. And they kind of had like one big block area, I think like. Supposed to pay for all the additional paneling and your lighting and your sound and like everything else. Um, there was a smaller line item that. Stuff, those numbers have turned to be much larger, once we brought girding builders on and they actually identified with consultant. For electricity is going to be, here's your actual cost for your planning, uh, to get everything designed and laid out, get your planning approval, and those numbers are much larger. Than that original estimate was. The, the biggest one item, line item though, was due to the floodplain issues, we were assuming that we'd be able to do a large concrete pad. And put, um, the less expensive bleachers on it, they have all of the cross bracing. Kind of like the north and the south ends have now, all that very intricate cross bracing underneath them. Um, but when the engineers have taken a closer look at now, again, with Gertie coming on board and they've consulted or, um, con- contracted with Devco Engineering. And when they ran those calculations, just even though those poles are small, because there's so many of them. The drag from a flood coming out that would, would make it so that that estimated four-inch pad would may have about, or like six or maybe eight inches. Thick deep in order to get enough of a secure, um, footing on there and secure those down so they don't get washed away in a flood. And by the time you're doubling the thickness of the pad, it made more sense just to go with a different, um, structure, which uses the. I-beam and post, um, so you're going to have fewer posts, but they're going to be bigger, the space underneath will be open, so there's less opportunity for drag. But that added, I think that alone added about four hundred thousand dollars on to the cost of just the bleachers. And that wasn't really anybody's fault, it was just until you get an engineer hired and you're actually running the calculations on flood. Water drag on your facility, we just didn't know, so that was a four hundred thousand dollar uptick, so, you know, there's been a combination of things in there that have. Made that bump up from the one point nine to now the two point three, two point one, there was, anyway.
Okay, cool, thank you, just curious, hear more about it.
Thank you, um, any other discussion on the legislative agenda and requests? Um, wonderful, then this is what we'll plan to somehow squeeze into like, you know, ten or fifteen minutes of each of them tomorrow. I, I mean, I know, especially for the news publication one, Chris and I have talked to both of their offices, uh, quite a bit. Funding pieces, um, are a little newer to them, but I, every time I walk past Senator Anderson's office. His staff is like, can you have something? Like, I need to add on my spreadsheet, what do you, what do I, what am I adding on my spreadsheet for Fulham? And I'm like, we're coming, we're coming, um, so they're, they're ready for it. And then, um, I know we don't have it on the agenda, if everyone's okay with it, there, it sounds like there's a couple of council reports that people want to report on, is everyone okay with us? Twenty, a couple of minutes on that, okay, councillor Andrade?
Uh, just as you can see in your packet, there's some information about the upcoming, upcoming point in time counts for Lynn-Vetten and Lincoln County. Uh, and, uh, it's counting, uh, uh, houseless population, uh, in our communities. We have one site in Fulham, uh, PCS will be coordinating and so, um, we're looking for volunteers. To help with that effort, uh, the more, uh, accurate our counts are, then the more, like, it affects our, our funding for. Um, I'm not entirely sure how, what the funding is, goes specifically towards, but towards housing initiatives. Is that correct, Chris?
Yeah, and I think even. Yeah, I'm not sure what I could choose, but there's a lot of different, a lot of grants that get applied for, they want your point in time counts, I don't know how much like. And I think a lot of those grants are like annual grants that they apply for every year, so that does have an impact on that. Um, but there's other things. Standard metric that's used, um, for people that are dealing with social services, and so you want accurate numbers there, you know, if you've got. Twenty people in the community and you count two, you've got more need in your community than what you're showing and what you're going to get resources to help. Estimated or undercounted, but we don't, you know, you don't want to overcount either, but want to be accurate, and the only way you do that is by having enough volunteers that show up that day to. Go out and hit the streets and.
Yes, thank you, um, and so there are three days that are being coordinated. Um, if anyone at home wants to volunteer, there's information in the packet online, um, about that. For January thirtieth and February sixth from nine AM to noon, and also Tuesday, February fourth, from four thirty to seven thirty.
Thank you.
Uh, and then to councillor Crocker.
Oh, the pressure, uh, we actually have an invitation, correct? We have an invitation, um, councillor Crocker and I are working. Jointly with, uh, Jody Russell from Fulham Community Services, who have a community food drive. Um, we will be meeting here at the city, thank you, city, uh, there's city staff, we'll be meeting here at city hall on the twenty-second. And you want to give the information for that, I mean.
Nine o'clock, we'll meet here and then we'll be passing out city maps with assignments for each group that shows up to volunteer. To go and on February twenty-second, they're going to put bags and notices about the food drive. And then on March first, one week later, they go along and pick up the. The bags that are on the porch, we don't ever bother the resident or knock or anything.
And then we'll be, we'll be sorting those bags into categories at the hangar, which is at the Fulham Community Church, thank you so much. For, um, allowing us to use that building, those that are listening, and, uh, we'll be there sorting those canned goods into categories and then boxing them up in preparation. For taking them over to PCS, and that'll be the sorting, while we meet here, uh, the twenty-second and the first, here at nine o'clock. For the distribution and the collection, for the sorting of the cans and boxing and then transporting them, we'll be meeting at the hangar. Um, right behind La Roquita, um, Saturday, the first at ten o'clock. And will be, those, there'll be individuals who like to volunteer, so we would like to know if our city council would also like to consider. Volunteering their time to participate in this wonderful food drive and building community and helping those with food insecurity. And if you're available any of those days, please come join us, the invitation is there, um, this is a great community builder. It's helping people in need, um, and a way to show and, and build volunteerism and a sense of community.
And we're working on, um, Facebook announcements that will have all the information, it will be ready within a couple of days, I think. And so, um, if you have more questions, you can see that, I think it might be on the city, um, Facebook too.
Share that and get the, get the word out about this, uh, food drive, really important and a great opportunity, we'll be having youth groups and forage groups and. Others helping, um, that have already volunteered to come help distribute bags and collect bags, so it's going to be a wonderful community, um, effort. Looking forward to it.
Wonderful, thank you for the work. Um, the last thing I'll say is just, remember if you're available to come to the town hall at Fulham High School.
Get Saturday there.
Senator Mercury and Congresswoman Hoyle, um, it's. It's, um, three PM, uh, on, on Saturday and then, yeah, check, check your city email.
Yeah, I pray.
Yeah, yeah. I was just, there's more detail. Yes, Saturday, three PM, I, it's just, it's, it's cool to have them both in Fulham at the same time, so, um, and we, you know. Want to make sure we say hi and, and let them know what's going on in our town.
Make sure the streets are swept.
And with that, uh, any final comments? Okay, having reached the end of our agenda, I will adjourn this meeting at nine twenty-four.